Okay, so hello again. I am Amy Buehler with the Celebration Area Council. I'm the chairperson for 2020. I also am the branch manager of Land Title Professionals. And I would like to introduce Peggy Chaudry. And she will be telling you a little bit about herself and why this position is correct for her.
Okay, thank you so much, Amy. Thanks for having me and thanks for everyone who's tuning in. My name is Peggy Chaudry. I am your current county commissioner here for District One. And a lot of people ask me, what's District One? So I just want to quickly explain that if that's okay. That's on Thacker. If you know 192 pretty well, you would think Thacker Avenue, all the way down to the Four Corners area, which meets the four corners of our other counties. So our neighbor, our sister counties of Orange, Lake Polk, and of course us here in Osceola County. So I just kind of like to explain that really quickly. But yes, I'm a current commissioner and I became commissioner in 2016. Learned a lot, of course, in the four years. But prior to that, I'm also self-employed. I have a small business. I own the small hotel on 192 called Civilian. And I had that for almost 10 years with my parents. So it was my mom, my dad and myself. We worked every single day, seven days a week together. Could have been a whole great show of its own. But yeah, so we did that for that long. And that kind of what got me into a lot of the local politics of what was happening. Because small businesses also suffer a lot from, you know, the policies and the ordinances that are put in place. And so that really gave me an idea of what was lacking and what's kind of missing with the thought processes when the policies are put in place. And so I started just seeing a lot of discrepancies and a lot of challenges that we were really facing as small business owners specifically. But also living in District One, right? So I lived on the West End and I seen that, you know, we have so much great assets here in the West End and everything. But I also know we collect a lot of taxes because we get a lot of tourists in this area. So I always kept saying, you know, hey, you know, I don't want us to be forgotten when it comes to the county. I want us as residents to also be thought of and to be able to get rewards of collecting all these taxes and also suffering from traffic because of it. So yes, I decided to run for office and I wanted to see. I worked very hard to do that with many volunteers and many people that truly wanted to see change. And so then I became a commissioner there. And before that, by the way, my very first career that I did was a federal officer. So I was, yeah, many people don't know that. I was a federal officer with immigration and I was assigned actually at the Miami Airport. So I did inspections for quite some time. I actually started when it was a department, Department of Justice. It right before Department of Homeland. So once we switched to Department of Homeland, I was still there and was transferred and got promoted here to Orlando Office as an adjudication officer, which basically is those that approve and deny residencies and citizenships and stuff. And I became more of an expert in marriage fraud and seeing the marriage fraud process and stuff and then stopping that, of course, from happening. So yeah, so that was one of my first careers. So I just, I have a lot of different experiences in different realms, not just understanding tourism, of course, because I was in the business, but also understanding processes with the government because of my federal, the federal position I had. And also how these processes affect the people from either residents from doing what they need to do to prosper in their communities, but also small businesses to do what they need to do to prosper in their community. So it gave me really that whole realm of experience. And, you know, what I want, I think my biggest thing was that we as local government need to be more accessible and we need to be more communicating with our public. Because that was my biggest pet peeve when I was a resident, not being able to get a hold of my local government, you know, when I needed it. When I have whether problems at my house or from my road in my streets or problems in my business. And so those are things that I definitely put in place to start fixing.
That's great.
Yeah, I hope that was okay.
No, that's perfect. I didn't know half of that about you. So I'm really glad you did that instead of me. Okay, so let's dive in. I have five questions. So I'll just ask the questions and then you'll get five minutes. I figured to answer the questions.
Tell me the timeline.
Okay, I'm not really keeping track, but I will. I'll try. Okay, so I have, in District One, more specifically West 192, we are known for the vast amount of tourism-related options. However, there is a lack of professional office space in the area. What, if anything, would you as a county commissioner do to diversify options in the area or incentivize developers to continue developing in the area?
Yeah, I know for sure. That's a great question because one of the best things, of course, that I love is, because I was in that realm is tourism. And tourism, obviously, a lot of people come here because of the aspects of tourism that we have. I mean, many people move here after coming and visiting Disney and seeing what we have to offer. So that's one of our biggest assets and we're very grateful for it. With that though, comes a lot of challenges, right? We've got challenges of traffic and we've got challenges of some of the little things missing, which we would say, to some degree, is like those little spaces, right? For the small businesses. As a small business owner myself, I do hear from small businesses that they would like more variety, right? It's almost like housing variety. It would be great to have more of that rental variety. And I don't see, there's nothing wrong with us coordinating as a county commission, as a county itself, to work with developers to kind of bring those options and incentivize for that. And I know the county has collaborative efforts working in incubators with like the city and doing different types of office spaces. There's also other small businesses that have come out and said, hey, we want to kind of start this incubator of businesses, which is one right now that's in, also in the county that is really successful. We would need to bring stuff like that over here more in our district. So those are things I would love to work with developers or work with the small businesses to come together to see what types of properties they would like to see maybe transition. Because in District One, there's a lot of properties right now that we could also transition. I mean, obviously with COVID, you know, there's a lot of changes that's gonna happen. And so we could collaborate with businesses that perhaps may be, maybe shutting down, that have bigger spaces, that do not mind having those multi-units available for those small businesses to have that option. Because obviously District One, due to a lot of people coming to District One and us having more, our price points of land space of homes and stuff are more, are higher. Let's, you know, they're higher than the rest of the county. And so we need to have those opportunities. So I'm more in favor of working collaboratively together to get that done.
Okay, yeah, that's, I know it's a real need in this community. There's a couple of the guys on the Celebration Area Board that have run into that issue several times.
And I think it would be great with the chamber. I mean, why not collaborate with such a great organization to say, okay, let's go ahead and work together to talk to some of the developers? And you know what's great is that now is a good time. Because right now, we have developers that perhaps even stop projects. You see what I mean? Because of COVID. And so to incentivize them to say, hey, now we've got also some commitments that we can give you that says, hey, if you continue your project, but you make it multi-unit office space in the West End, we could potentially get you some commitments of different businesses that would want to commit to being there. Of course, for great pricing too, because now they're sharing in the cost, right? So, you know, I think it's all about coordinating and working together.
Yeah, that's great. Okay, so next question we have, this is a two-part question about the economic impact. As a result of the epidemic, we're going to suffer budget shortfalls. The tax revenue has been decreased and voters want to know what you can do to advocate to ensure that the county remains fiscally disciplined and how you're going to manage and be prudent with tax dollars. And the second part, what is your philosophy on what the local government should be doing to stimulate the economy?
Okay, so that's, I like that question because from the beginning of taking office, one of the biggest things that I've advocated for has been for us as a county to be more fiscally responsible. Why? Because as a small business owner, if I have to buy a new roof, I know this ahead of time. So I start saving, right? And I say, I need to save whether it's a hundred dollars every single week or day, whatever it is, you have to save a certain amount of money to know you need to get that done. I think that we need to start from the basics with county budget again. Because a lot of the times, from the beginning, and this is on record and people can see this, I've always questioned our budget when it comes to what are priorities? Because being the newer member on that board, there's been priorities set in place, you know, 10 years ago, five years ago, before me. And so they may not be the same priorities, especially now with COVID. I mean, we have projects that were in place prior to COVID that I know for a fact are going to be now put aside, which are okay, because we need to focus on what's the most important thing. Like if we need a roof, that's the very first thing we need to change. So for me, from the beginning, for the past three and a half years or four years or so, that has been my advocacy, is saying we need to start being more responsible. And that has brought some more thinking within my board, which is great. Like we've been talking more about, you know, a little bit more about how our dollars are spent, more questions. And as a matter of fact, that also resulted to creating the Citizens Board of People to reevaluate our budget last year. Because there were so many questions about, you know, where's our money and dollars really going? And this is of course prior to COVID. Because people were upset about, and you know, sure enough, they should be, because so was I about, you know, where's our dollars going? If not in our infrastructure that we're having so many issues with? And our traffic and so forth? So, you know, so I commend my board for saying, you know what? Let's do this committee. We're gonna have a committee of people. That was great. Because now we were able to include residents into that committee meeting to give us some of their suggestions. And out of that, one of the people I suggested to be on that board said, you know what, we need to kind of question some of the, some of our constitutionals. And one of them was the sheriff's, the sheriff's budget as well. So, you know, I think it's important when citizens, when residents and citizens have a right to evaluate our budget. Because only then, well, one, it'll be understood, okay, where is the dollars being spent a little better? And then also saying, oh, I don't think that that is a true priority. We can put that on hold. Let's go ahead and do something else. Which is why we had that whole conversation about traffic and about our infrastructure and the fact that we are so far behind, right? Because we still have to catch up. And yes, we're gonna have shortfalls. I mean, there's no doubt about it. I don't think anyone can say different at this point. So I've already had, started having conversations with my, with my staff. And we've been talking about where are the dollars being saved right now at this point in order to know where we're gonna be? Because we don't know where we're gonna be at the end of this. We don't know how long, much longer this is gonna last, where this is gonna lead us. So we really have to be careful with our reserves and so forth. And the good thing is, I have already made sure that our TV dollars, TD dollars were not put into the projects that originally they were planned for. So we've already spent, I believe they said, and this was just this past Monday, the staff explained that it's already seven million dollars that we're saving from there. We're not utilizing for those projects. So little by little, we're starting to see, okay, we're gonna start saving these dollars. And so I'm gonna continue advocating for that because that's the only way that we could be responsible. We don't know what's gonna happen. And I'm sure we're gonna come and say there's gonna be more projects put on hold. Again, it's all about priorities. And for me, it's the district. What is it that my district residents are focused on? And what is it that they need from our residents to our small businesses? And to our bigger businesses and attractions? What is it that we could do coordinating together in this time? Because it is a critical time. And we've never been through this before. So yeah, coordinating all of that together is important.
It's new, it's new and priorities change.
And that's the thing, you know, I think sometimes we all talk about priorities. It was funny, I was just talking to another resident in our district and he's like, well, you know, my priority before was that one light, but now my priority is everybody being safe. Like that is the only thing I, you know, he's like, can you guys do more messages? And can you, and so it's great to see that enthusiasm of understanding, right? Okay, we know we've gotta change it. So for me, it's like, by the way, I'm still having town halls all the time. Only we're doing it through Zoom. We did it through Teams a few times. Now we're doing it through Zoom. And I'm coordinating with other organizations and saying, let's start working together on these Zooms. Because now we could kind of have anyone join from anywhere, which hopefully that allows more people joining. But more questions and more people can say, you know what? This is my comment. This is where I think my priority is. And so I would love to hear from the residents. That is my priority is listening, okay, during these town halls of what I'm doing, what do you wanna see when we talk about budget? What is it that is your priority today, not yesterday? Because we're in a whole new day now. So that's gonna be my whole goal as well, to continue advocating for the priorities of the residents.
Perfect. Okay, so let's keep going. Oftentimes, understanding and navigating county rules and processes is confusing, costly and overwhelming to new businesses. What would you propose the county should do to simplify and remove barriers for new and emerging businesses?
Well, I'm gonna tell you, one of the things I did since I got in office, because that was my, one of my other pet peeves as a business owner. You know, it was so funny because I would call the line and they would say, okay, well, this is, this is what you have to do. But it's not like really detailed. Like you're just like, okay, but if I get these five documents, but these documents, this, this. And then, but, but then again, I already paid that. Do I have to also pay this? It'd be, it is very complicated. And, and no fault, I would say of staff. It's just that it is complicated process. So what I did was I started a business committee right away from the bat. My first year, I went ahead and started a business committee where I invited everyone in District One, business owners that would like to come in and answer, have questions answered directly by the department heads. So I had the department's heads, like we have code enforcement, we have, they told my, because you know, we have, we have permitted, we have all of the people that they would have to anyway get the answers from, you know, if they escalate or whatever. But they're there, these are department heads. And so that gave an awesome opportunity for many businesses. And most of it pertained to code enforcement. A lot of it pertained to, hey, details of an application. Like, okay, I already did this, why do I have to also do this? And then the explanation as to why, right? And then some of it was funny because we were able to see that some of the red tape sometimes isn't so necessary, right? And so it actually helps that department kind of coordinate and fix what they're doing wrong as well. So I really loved that. That is a huge success. We were having quarterly meetings and we had businesses of all kinds that come in. We had a gentleman that wanted to open up a new restaurant that came from Puerto Rico after Hurricane Maria. And he got all the documents and the information and spoke directly with the supervisor, which he was like, wow, this has never happened. I didn't know this. So I'm very proud of that I was able to implement that because I know that helps a lot of people. And I know it helps people moving, especially moving their businesses or expanding their business, which does happen, you know? So it's great to have that, that information in front of them. And so I'm gonna continue advocating for that committee. But more importantly too, is I wanna start seeing what else we could take in, maybe to the next level. And it's all about participation. You know, the businesses like the Chamber Organization could also get involved with that. That's something else we could do on a next level. You see, we could do things like that coordinating. Because it doesn't, it doesn't hurt to work together. So, so yeah, we can do that and much more. It depends on what the businesses would like to see too. So I would like to hear their comments and see what else they think.
Okay, great. That's excellent. And I know sometimes people struggle with having their business in two counties. Because it's totally different roles.
You're preaching to the choir.
You have to do this for this. You have to do this for Orange. You have to do this for that lake.
Well, you know, I'm in the Four Corners. So as the commissioner of Four Corners, I hear it all the time. And it's funny because I'll drive to one of the businesses right next door, the business is not technically Osceola, but I still visit them. And the reason why, and many businesses will tell you, oh, that's not my commissioner. I'm from Polk, but I love her, you know? And it's just because I, you know, I do knock on their doors. And it's important to me because I say, even though I don't, they're not in my realm, but if they communicate with me, I can then send that email to that commissioner. So they're weird, because we've gotta work together. Again, it's coordinating efforts. And the great thing I'm proud of too is our Four, is our Four Corners Council. Our Four Corner Council has been doing amazing work with the Chamber, doing, you know, coordinating all four of us and coming up with one vision. And that's actually the name, like one vision. I'm very proud, they do tours every year. So every year we're in this bus, right? And other commissioners, the other commissioners from each of the districts come. We have a chance to talk amongst commissioners and saying, hey, how can we do this? And I'm proud to say that each of the commissioners have been so great. Like they, they're like, let's do it. What do we need to do? Because they see that the worst thing you need as a business and an employer, the worst thing you need is like, okay, you need 20 documents because you're in two counties, or three. I mean, I've met someone that was like, well, because my property is extending a little bit more. I'm like, what? So yeah, so it's, you know, it's, it's nice to see that we have these resources that we've been putting in place since I started. I've been heavily involved with the Four Council, making sure I, Four Corners Council, making sure I support the one vision. Anything they need, I've been able to help out. And the staff has been great with the county. They've been supporting those efforts. And we have Orange, Lake and Polk that has been hugely involved. So I wanna thank, you know, all of them. Because without the coordinating efforts, we're not gonna get it done, right? You know, I mean, look at the grant process. You know, we have a grant program, but then if another county doesn't have it and you're next door, as a small business or even as a resident, you see that difference. And you're just like, that doesn't make sense. Why did they cut that grass and not this grass? Like literally things like that.
It's across the street.
Exactly, it's across the street. It's technically Orange or something. But you know, I'm just proud that we're all starting to work together. Because for me, that's the biggest thing. And I'm gonna continue advocating that way. I will continue doing that.
Yeah, that's huge. Very good, thank you.
Nope.
Okay, so this is, as you know, the county recently had a one cent sales tax referendum. And we want to know, did you support this tax increase? And would you support seeking future tax increases or surplus, surpluses in the future to fund transportation?
Yes, thank you for that question. So this came forward in my commission. When it came forward from my commission on record, I did say the concerns of the residents, which the major concerns of the residents in my district was one, why are we putting it on a special ballot? It's gonna cost over $300,000. It doesn't make any sense. That's on record, anyone could look it up. I also stated that if we're gonna put it on a ballot, it should be in 2020. Because elections was literally a year away. And there is no reason why we couldn't wait. My biggest thing was also education. And what are we gonna do with the dollars? And this is, again, I read a statement because I wanted to be as specific. And this is why I know anyone could look this up and see what exactly I read. Because one of my biggest things was, where are the dollars going? If my district is not getting any part of those dollars, then how do I explain that to the residents? And make sure that, you know, that we're all being taken care of in the county? And not only that, even if it's roads in different districts, it's okay. But we need to know for sure. So my biggest issue was that with, with the understanding of how the dollars were gonna be spent. As a matter of fact, I went on television also and said that I do not believe in the sales tax because of the fact that it was not specified as to where exactly it was gonna go. I also said in both the English and Spanish channels, I believe it was, in both, I said very clearly that at the end of the day, if I can't explain where money is gonna go as a small business owner or as a commissioner, then I have no right to ask for those funds. Now, this was put on the ballot. And I clearly stated, I will never stop anyone from voting for something. But me myself, I don't agree with the way this is, with the way that is being asked of it, right? So putting it on the ballot is one thing. But then encouraging people to vote for it is a total different thing. And everyone who knows, who came to me, asked me, talked to me, saw me on TV, would have seen that I was against the sales tax, but this particular transportation sales tax. But it was because of the reasons that I expressed. One, if there's not a clear definition as to where the dollars are gonna go, I can't approve, I can't vote for it as a resident, never mind encourage others to do it. And two, most importantly, you know, the timing was just not correct either. We should have been able to have the time to educate and to understand ourselves where the money was gonna go and then be able to relay that to our residents to have a better understanding of whether or not they would have. A game plan, I mean, even in your household, if you get an extra hundred dollars in your household, you then look and see how are you gonna spend it? Now, some people may choose to spend it on entertainment. Some people may choose to save it because a rainy day could come along. And some people may choose to spread it in different ways. That's fine, but you plan, right? And you look at stuff. So actually, after that meeting, when it was decided, okay, I'll go on the ballot, after that meeting, because I pressed on my commission so much about not having a clear plan, I believe it was two meetings after, that they brought a paper plan. And it did say a lot of some of the roads and the streets that it would cover. Again, on record, though I had to be honest, and I said, this doesn't mean anything because three votes will change it. So unless it's on the ballot, to me, it was more credible. And so, you know, that's just different thoughts from my, from the rest of my board and that's fine. I mean, I don't, you know, everybody has different understandings and different ways they wanna do the things. But clearly, I don't in the future foresee that we're gonna increase any. I myself would say that I don't foresee this in the future adding. As a matter of fact, when this did fail, I said that I will not be supporting any other increases for the year of the sales tax. Because there was, you know, some thought of maybe bringing this back for 2020. And I said, no. The voter spoke, they said no. And so therefore, we respect that. We said, let them choose, and we did. And so for me, the majority said no, and therefore, that's what we should listen to. So no, I'm not gonna bring that back. And listen, now we have COVID-19. To even think of increases at this point is, I think, a bad idea. And it's only because I do still believe that we could prioritize a little better, like I said before. And I may be just one person on that commission, but I'm still gonna advocate for it a hundred times if I have to. Let's just start looking at more better priorities in the way that the people are asking us. Let's, let's, let's ask the residents, what is it that they want us to prioritize and how? And in the same conversation, every town halls, the biggest things still continue. We still have our infrastructure problems that we've had before COVID-19. You know, we still have those major issues and concerns. We still have the lack of our traffic and the way that our traffic is currently controlled. We still have a lot of problems with that. So all those things still need to be, I think, controlled and fixed. So those priorities are the ones that we need to look at.
Okay, great. Okay, so this is related question. So this is gonna be the last, the last two. Okay, so what is your position on rent control? Are you for it or against it and why?
Okay, well, rent control, I was, I know I spoke a little bit about it earlier. Rent control is kind of like a vague, big thing. But a lot of times, I come from Providence, Rhode Island originally, and there is rent control there. Not for a specific, like rent, like let's say I'm a landlord, I have my house, not as a private entity in that perspective. The rent control is more with local government, with the actual government. So that's kind of a difference when we talk about what's rent control and how it is. Also, when you think of rent control, people think sometimes of, you know, certain, it becomes like a bad establishment, right? Or a bad building. And that's not something we want either, right? So we wanna make sure that when we talk about anything is that we coordinate with developers. The best way to do anything that you wanna bring change in is coordinating with developers. I would say, you know what, maybe 10% of this specific building could potentially be to some degree rent control. Because now that could be spread out throughout all the county and it could be spread out in different places where you don't get that whole concept of, oh, that's, that's it. But when it comes to landlords, no. I think that's gonna be a lot more challenging. And I'm gonna tell you why. A lot of the landlords, you know, there's people like that retire and they buy one home. Sometimes people don't realize that that one home is the one home that is their investment, right? And they say, so I'm gonna, that rent is what's helping me survive. I collect my social security. My social security could be $600 or $900 a month.[1552.28] This is my excess income, which I collect, let's say a thousand, but out of the thousand, you have expenses, so you still like, let's say, six hundred, right? So now the person actually is only doing uh between two things, is collecting about twelve hundred dollars, so, oh, I mean, twelve hundred dollars a month, so. These are things that people also have to remember, and so to put a blanket statement on something is never a good idea. It's always good to start speaking to people, and I had a conversation with another organization about monitoriums and and, you know, and this, and I said, listen. The biggest thing we could, we can do to fix any of these problems when it comes to rent control, monitoriums on rent and helping the people. Is coming together with the people that make also those decisions and that have a vast interest, that are like, you know, they're parties to that. Okay, so we're talking about realtors, we're talking about developers, we're talking about residents that are in the binding situations. And we're also talking about individual landlords. Seniors, I would say, because a lot of time, I do know that seniors also invest that way, and so I would love to have them all on the table. Why? Because if we're all on a table, everyone's gonna say, this is my concern, this is why we need to do this, right? Someone else is gonna say, that's a great point, but if we do that, then this happens, why? Because everything has a trickle effect, right? Right, so one of the biggest things I always tell people is, listen, I'm all for one listening, because that is my job. Uh listening and 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 understanding where someone's coming from, whether it's a resident that wants one way thing. You know, they see it their way, and another resident that sees it their way, or a business that sees it their way. But it's important to bring them together and say, okay, all three of you see it your ways, and here's my challenge. How do we come together to make it work for all of us? That's the challenge, right? But that's what I love to do. And I'm proud to say that in in this is almost an instant, but to show unity and efforts. In my district, I was able for the first time bring together um developers with HOAs. Yes, and you know, what when we, what happens when a development comes to your, next to your neighborhood? I mean, if you don't have a say in it, you're nervous, you're scared, because you're like, oh my god, they're gonna ruin my my scenery, they're gonna ruin, and it's true, they should be nervous, right? So one of the things I'm very proud of is is um the developments that have come, you know, I've been able to sit with them and say. You know, let's go ahead and coordinate, because I have an HOA here, and this HOA is very concerned about this development. Why don't we meet at the table and talk? And because of that, we've had, I believe it was three developments quite recently that passed, and the reason why they passed, it wasn't because the developer said, yes. It was because the HOA came to the meetings and said, yes, now we agree with this.
Yeah, and this is why.
And this is why, uh but it's important to put everything on the table when these conversations happen. And I'm very honest, when I bring my staff, I bring the developers and the residents of the HOAs. Or even residents that are not part of the HOA, sometimes around the area, they'll just come and join, and that's great. Um but they're able to give that feedback, so we're able to fix issues such as security issues that that are gonna cause some traffic issues that have caused. For example, we were able to gain in one of the um developments that that I'm very proud of, we were able to gain a right of way that we've been needing. For a long time to actually build another road, so that we can have more proper connectivity. And the residents, you know, were like, yes, this is great, let's do this, and we were able to downgrade their zoning with their understanding of it. So what developer lose, yeah, like.
Everybody works together.
Everybody works together, I mean, and and they were able to meet in the middle, and that's not thanks to me, it's thanks to them. Because they said, okay, commissioner, we're gonna sit at the table and we're gonna work this out. That is what I wanna see when we talk about anything that is a one side or another. We have to start working together, and I've got other examples of things that we were able to do, even through our committees. Um with our committees, I've been able to work out even, so obviously, a lot of people know, one of my biggest things is is homelessness and helping the families in need. Because I've seen the suffering live in a, uh being on the quarter, you know, so much with my hotel and stuff, even prior to being a commissioner. And so I was able to bring residents into into this uh goal of saying, you know, we need something different. You know, with or without support of leadership, the great thing is that when residents have a passion, only residents could get it done, right? So I'm the type of commissioner that I say, okay, you want, you wanna get this done, we're gonna get it done, we're gonna do it together, because it's what you're asking. And that's what my job is, and so um for me, I I'm just proud to be able to be that middle person. And be able to bring people together and make things work out for the better for everyone, so that's important to me.
Yeah, that's good. Okay, so this is just um with the current um place where we're at. Yeah, yeah, uh the pandemic crisis, the governor has extended the moratorium, moratorium on evictions, what's your position on that?
Yeah, so that that goes back to the conversation I was talking to, so I was talking to another organization as well about it, because they would like the evictions to last a period of time. And I said, listen, I'm all for having, again, the conversation on a table, but we've gotta bring other people, I said that to them, and I'm gonna say it here too. It can't be one sided, so we're gonna bring in uh landlords, we're gonna bring in realtors, we're gonna bring in. Um I would say developers in this case as well, because when development happens, it could also affect obviously pricing and all that. So I think those are the conversations we have to have, and listen, one of the great things is that I've never had people say to me, no, I never wanna work, no. From the residents to developers or, you know, realtors and stuff, they're always saying, yeah, okay, you know what, let's sit down. Let's see what that side wants, let's hear it, and then let's see where we could come together. It's truly the only way we're going to work and make our community better, because you're always going to have someone that says, no, I'd rather do this. And that's okay, but let that person's voice be heard, and then let's see how we could get it done together, even if it's meeting in the middle. Because sometimes you have to meet in the middle, right, and that's okay, but yeah, all sides were heard, and then sides were, at least they got a little of what they wanted. And that's what we need to do, so for me, and and taking positions for me is always like, I've gotta take the position of the people. Okay, so that's the most important thing, so when it comes to taking positions, I will take the positions of the people when we start. As I, the examples, the examples I've given you, as we work together, because the best thing is that. As a matter of fact, when I made what uh the example I gave you with the developers and the HOAs coming forward and saying, yes, we agree to this, it wasn't even my position. I said, no, let's come together, we're going to do it, then you all tell me what you want me to do. Because the buck falls there, right, with you folks, tell me what you want, this is gonna affect you, it's gonna affect your community, so you tell me what you want. Uh and they will come on record and say, yes, we we like this, they're doing everything we're asked, and this is great, this, we were able to meet in the middle, we were able to do this. You know, so we have no problem with this, that is what I wanna continue doing and seeing. Um I always say I'm a huge advocate of bringing people together, because to me, that's the best way to do it, whether it's a major problem or small problem for that matter, you know. Um so it 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 really does help, and by the way, if I may, I would like to talk a little bit about my student committee, because they too have a part in decision making. My student committee is only fifth graders through twelfth graders, uh but they're really smart, I mean, kids nowadays know everything, thanks to Google. I know, it's so funny, yeah, they're not even typing as much as they should, or writing for that matter. Um so yeah, so our student committee is amazing, because that was another committee I started, because I said, you know what, I would love to hear from the voices of the future. And whether we like it or not, we're not always gonna be here, and so we need to start teaching and training our uh young future leaders. To be leaders and to say, we wanna also understand how a commission works, how the county works, and what decisions could we make? So my uh my student committee is amazing, they're they're kids from all over, uh students from all over the county, different schools. Um and they were able to participate in my Better Make Grants and actually distribution of them, they actually decided on the applications. They went through interview processes with them, uh it was funny, because when they were interviewing, they were just like, wow, it's like twenty five kids interviewed me. I said, yeah, I'm not doing the interviews, it's the kids, so it was just, and you know, they're so smart, I mean, when we talk about responsibility with budgets. You know, the the students themselves are like, okay, so you're gonna spend on what, and how are you gonna do it, and every dollar, so. It is so great to see.
See, my kids just say, give me your car, they think it's like unlimited.
You gotta put them on my committee, you gotta put them on my committee, which, okay, that's personal, so they probably continue that. But no, when we, when I told them, listen, this is your responsibility, guys, you're distributing almost ten thousand dollars here, you've gotta give me your advice, what do you think? You know, what do you, where do you think this should go? Why would that organization help our community? And so when they interviewed and and they gave me.
They're probably tougher on them than.
They were so tough, I, the question, and I did have nothing to do with the question, nothing, they all kind of like got got together, I said, you guys do your thing. And yeah, the questions they came up with were were amazingly great, like I, it's just like, I was, I was very proud. But the reason why I bring it up is because when we talk about working together, right? We can't forget those that sometimes may not feel they have a voice, from our homeless population to our less fortunate. To those that are are veterans, that perhaps feel like they're not being heard, and our young generation. Um bringing them together, I think, is what's gonna make our our county prosper and really be um awesome for all of us. You know, it it's the only way to really do it, so um I've challenged always myself to bring people together, and that is why. You know, these open doors for people and opportunity has been so important with me, I'm also the only commissioner that has interns in my office. That has volunteers in my office from college, because, hey, if anybody wants to learn local government, please, my door's open. As a matter of fact, you help me, so come on in, uh they'll talk to constituents for, I mean, they'll do so much great work, and it's. They learn so much, they don't realize complications, and they're just like, wow, this is complicated, can we make it easier? I'm like, your generation's gonna make it easier, yes, let's do it, so yeah, so I'm just excited about that, and that's kind of, that's what I would like to continue and stuff like that. But um but yeah, so, sorry, I know I I deviate, but.
Yeah, no, it's okay, so that's all the questions I have, um I wanna thank you for taking the time to. Do this today, I know it's been, scheduling has been hectic, but um we finally got together, and I'm really glad that um, you know, we got to hear your perspectives. And um that was great, so is there anything else you wanna say or?
No, I just wanna say, this is great, I think information is key to success, uh and communication is key to success. I just, if anybody wants to get involved, whether it's the town halls, whether it's the committees that we mentioned, whether it's your opinions on the budget, the budget's coming up. Folks, um any opinions and so forth of what our priorities should be after covid? Because remember, we're all suffering this, it's the first time, it's really, we never really faced this before, so let me hear from you, um so they can always reach out to me. At the county commission email address at Peggy dot Chodri at Osceola dot org. Um or they could also go to Osceola dot org's website, by the way, the currently what's open is the rental assistance program. Our foreclosure prevention program, which by the way, we put seventy percent of the sixteen point four million dollars into the rental assistance programs. Which I'm proud of, from the very beginning of covid, I've been the advocate for saying, we need to be sure, we put dollars in there, that was one of the priorities I had. Uh we also put ten percent into food and securities for our nonprofits, as you may be aware, and twenty percent for our small businesses. And now we've opened that up even more with the sixteen point four million, so small businesses apply, you know. Go to we've opensafely dot com, uh and and definitely apply, I think it's important, also, the small businesses should be filling out the surveys. There are surveys available for them, I would love them to fill those out, I believe it's on we've opened safely as well. Um so just so that we could hear from them, because the only way to continue helping is understanding what they're doing. Uh but please, oh, and be part of my email list, I send out a lot of emails, uh you could ignore them, the ones you don't want, and then just read the ones you want. Um so just shoot me an email, um and I'll put you on my email list, uh happy to do that as well. So communication is key, guys, and I'm available, I've always been uh very accessible, and I will continue to be.
Okay, we appreciate you.
Thank you, thanks for this.